Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Bussinow.
Here.
Trustee Krasminsky.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue.
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Dunn.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. The approval of the agenda items, I believe we have one, is that correct?
We have two items, actually. We're going to postpone item number 22 until further notice. And also, we would like to place closed session, agenda item number 25 before closed session, agenda item number 24.
Okay. Any other corrections to the agenda?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Krasminsky to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have approval of the bills. As usual, there are two bill runs. If you wish an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Yes, Madam Chair. If there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers. Support. Supported by Mr. Bussinow to authorize payment of both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the previous meeting minutes, those being from January 23rd. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from January 23rd, 2019, as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Second.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. The consent agenda items.
Closed session meeting minutes.
Oh, the closed session meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the closed session meeting minutes from January 23rd?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I will make a motion to approve them.
Motion by Mr. Krasminsky.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to...
Smith.
I'm sorry, Smith.
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith. To approve the consent agenda, I mean to approve the closed session meeting minutes of January 23rd. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Now, we will have the consent agenda items. These are matters that come before the Board regularly. If anyone wishes to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so at this time.
Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Second.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments, and this is on agenda items only. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name. Remember, there is a three-minute time limit.
Jim Jelios, item 23. I'm here tonight to state my obvious support for this item. Early last year, the Board Trustees created an Ethics Committee, and after several months of work, the Ethics Committee submitted a draft of an ethics ordinance to the Board at a special meeting held October 3rd, 2018, for review. As has been previously stated by myself and others, I believe there's a real need for this ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance is to hopefully prevent future actions such as employee intimidation, harassment, and discrimination, as well as any unethical behavior by public officials. Many such examples of this behavior existed in the past. The previous actions of some, which have led to criminal indictments and/or convictions, certainly proves there's a need for this. Recently, Clinton Township decided last fall to work on an ethics ordinance for its township. Another purpose for this ordinance is to provide ethical guidelines for elected officials, employees to follow, and to provide the means by which to report unethical behavior. This ordinance will help ensure the honesty, integrity, and transparency for all concerned and prevent such actions from occurring in the future. As the Ethics Committee stated back in October last year, we stand willing to work with the Board on any needed changes or additions to make it effective. Many communities have some type of ethics ordinance in place. It's time we did too. I had a conversation with Mr. Assorti last November regarding some of the concerns raised at the October Ethics Workshop Meeting. After that conversation, he was to get with the Board members with suggestions made during that conversation. But with the December 12th workshop meeting date being preempted by Trustee Bucci's resignation and subsequent replacement, as well as Town Hall being closed most of December, this item was put on hold. It is time to move forward and get this ethics ordinance enacted. It's time to restore the public's faith and trust in its local government. I see no reason why any elected official would be against something that could help prevent the past actions that have plagued our township. Let's move forward for the betterment of this community to make this ethics ordinance a reality. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Rob Montia, 21754 Kendall Court, also a member of the Ethics Ordinance Committee. Just want to second Mr. Jelios's comments, but also just to remind the committee, you know, we've gone through this before, but as to the need of an ethics ordinance. Public bodies certainly are having them. When the new county government was formed over 10 years ago, it was embedded right into the charter. The Charter Commission felt that that was such a critical piece of the county function that it was embedded at that time. My current employer, when we sign up or start our job on day one, we have to go through a variety of ethics and compliance reviews to make sure that we're understanding what the corporation considers ethical behavior, make sure that we, as employees, adhere to that. And it's not just my current employers, prior employers similarly as well. The need for this is, of course, just to set an example. It's to set the standard for how we want to behave, how we want our employees to act, how we want to act with each other in the context of working for the betterment of the township. So, I'd ask you to certainly consider those functions, that we want to set a better example, we want to move forward from the things that happened in the past. This is a step in the right direction, and I would urge you to consider keeping this committee going so that way we can finish the mission and bring this township a ordinance that we could be proud of. Thank you.
Paul Jerry, address unfounded in the Clerk's office. Two items. First item is number eight, spending of $76,000, over $76,000 to upgrade to broadcast this meeting in HD. Unless there's some technology reason where this meeting's not going to be able to be broadcasted at all in the near future, because it's not in HD, I really can't see for the life of me of spending $76,000 to show the definition of the desk, or how nice your makeup looks, or anything in an HD format. To spend $76,000 to broadcast this meeting? Come on, let's get real. Second item is item number 13. Supervisor to execute the agreement with BPI Technology. This is a really open-ended, worded explanation. First thing, shouldn't that go through the purchasing agent to execute that agreement? And more important, shouldn't have that been executed before we gave BPI the lucrative contract a few months ago? Now, we're just finding out we're going to execute for technology support and find out what's, describe what her job's going to be here? Seems to me it was done after the fact, and it should have been done before we gave them the contract. Thank you.
I have two items to speak to, one being also the ethics ordinance. My name is Kathy Western, and I'd like to comment on the ethics ordinance, encourage you to move forward. And the absence of an ordinance need not be a barrier for striving for excellence in our township. You previously had a consultant who offered a specific best practice used by Boards to promote ethics and transparency. His advice was to start each meeting by calling upon the voting members to disclose any potential conflict of interest that they might have regarding any agenda item. Although this has not been adopted as a regular practice here, that doesn't stop any of you from personally announcing any conflict of interest you might have with any item as it comes up during the meeting. Doesn't mean you cannot vote on it. Doesn't necessarily mean that your vote is contaminated. It just means, for example, if you had previously received $10,000 in campaign donations from a contractor, and paying that contractor a substantial amount of non-budgeted money came up on the agenda, you might think about disclosing it before you vote, instead of letting people discover it later. The second item I'd like to speak on is number 15, the installation of streetlights. We have heard in the past what the expenses are for streetlight installation and maintenance. I expect we will hear similar numbers tonight. And for most of us hearing those, the low cost, even over time, is negligible compared to the benefits gained. I have heard, you know, a trustee say he believes that the adjacent residents should assume the cost for the streetlights. If I understood the Treasurer correctly in the past, she said that the expenses to the township to assess only nearby residents for this small amount forever would exceed the cost of just paying for it out of the budget. I would also add that it is not only those adjacent residents who benefit when you're talking about lighting at intersections. Everyone who drives bicycles or walks 24-mile road after dark will be safer. Let's prioritize safety for thousands of people who travel our roads. And if you do vote no on streetlights, please explain to residents why. And I must say, it's great to see a full Board sitting up there. Better things are coming. Thank you.
A few months ago, at a meeting, I brought up the lack of lighting and sidewalks on Fairchild by the schools. The next day, the speed limit trailer was out there, but I've heard no more since. I'm curious, has there been any research into it? It's very dangerous to go down there right now. Any kid walking to that school has to walk in the street in the dark because there's no sidewalks and no streetlights. Thank you.
Very well, we will move on to the public hearing. This is for the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Funding. I will open the public hearing. It is 7:14, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Maher. His office has been handling this for us.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and members of the Board. As part of your packet, each of you received kind of a background on the 2018 funding breakdown, and then a, basically what the county has collected with regard to nonprofit agencies interested in the remaining money that comes from the program for services. Seventy-five percent of our allocation, if you go to the back page, were allocated $156,772 this year through CDBG. Twenty-five percent of that is allowed to be used for services, of which the county basically participates yearly with the Minor Home Repair Senior Program and the MCA Senior Chore Program. The amount of money that we have discretionary to determine expenditure for, out of the request for the 2019 requests, we have requests totaling $21,094. We have $6,693 that we can allocate. So, last year, you allocated it all to St. Vincent de Paul. If you wanted to maintain that, we can certainly do that. Or if you wish to divide those amounts of money, you could do that. Tonight, we're going to hold a public hearing where each of the CDBG requesters can share their concerns and share their, why they would like to have an allocation put towards them. You can divide this in thirds or in half, or just give it all to one entity if you desire. At the end of this, we'll close the public hearing and then ask for a motion to approve a resolution to accept the 2019 resolution.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on block grant funding? Please come up to the podium, state your name and organization.
Good evening, and I apologize, I'm very hoarse today. My name's Karen Bates-Gager. I'm here from Turning Point tonight, and we have made a request of you of $2,000. And I wanted to give you a little background information, what we're asking for and why. So, we're asking for funding for our emergency shelter. We run the domestic violence shelter here in Macomb County. And upon looking, well, how many Macomb County, or how many Macomb Township residents used our facility in fiscal year last year? We actually had 498 bed nights. That means we had a Macomb Township the entire year, plus. It costs us $70 a night to house somebody, so it was nearly $35,000 that we spent to house your residents. Above and beyond that, we had an additional 93 clients that used our services, either counseling crisis line or sexual assault exam. All of our services are free to anybody that calls us, but there is obviously a cost involved with running the operation. So, we are asking actually for $2,000, which compared to the $35,000 we spent just in housing is pretty nominal. But we also offer all the sexual assault exams for the county. Last year, we did 374 sexual assault exams. Forty-six of those were kids under the age of 12, and those all came from Macomb County. We have a 24-hour crisis line that answers about 1,000 calls a month. And then we have counseling where we see thousands of people. In addition, we also run prevention education in the local schools, and we are in your school systems. So, we are seeing a variety of your residents through our shelter and through our services. I'm sorry, I'm so hoarse. Normally, I would tell you a lot more, but I'd love for you to ask me any questions that you will. I will. We'll tell you one other thing. One in four women are a survivor of either domestic violence or sexual assault. It affects more women than breast cancer, heart disease, asthma, anything. So, think about that. Like, look in the room. One in four.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Anyone else?
a member of St. Isidore-St. Vincent de Paul. Our organization is to serve the poor, and unfortunately, we do have poor in Macomb Township. We do this by helping them overcome financial difficulties that occur from situations like they lose their job, they had medical emergencies that put them out of work for a while, and sometimes they just need help getting back on their feet. So, we are there to answer their call for help. They have to call us. We can't call any of our clients. And they get our number from, there's a hotline that the downtown office has, and then there's also the, both of the manufactured home parks. When they give eviction notices, they give them a list of people to call, and we're on that list. So, and also, there's been a couple times in the past that there's been house fires in the township. If anybody calls us, we will go and give them emergency gift cards to buy basic needs for them, you know, clothes and whatever. Last year, 96% of our client base fell in the very low and low-income category. That was up 7% from the year before. We pay for evictions, late mortgage, late rent, late utilities, shut-offs. We also, besides doing that, we also have a food pantry which gives out monthly food and health and beauty items. And we also have three major holiday distributions. We have a client base of 55 families. Forty-three get the distribution. Last year, we decided to add another distribution for back-to-school, for all our families that have school-age children. They each got a gift card for each school-age child to buy school supplies, and then they each got, each family got approximately four large boxes of food and paper products and health and beauty aids. We are asking for your help to prevent homelessness in our community. As you can see from your handout, the need for assistance is still ongoing. Our client base is entirely in Macomb Township because we cannot service anybody that is not in our parish boundaries, which is entirely in Macomb Township. And we also have been doing this for, I'm, somebody else did it before me, and I've done it for five years, and I know she did it for at least three. We have never had any recaptured funds. In fact, the money that you so generously gave us last year was reimbursed, all of it was reimbursed to us by the January gent line. So, we thank you for that money, and we hope you find us worthy of having some more for this year. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
No ma'am. Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Fisher, and I'm the Development Director for Maggie's Wigs for Kids of Michigan. Ms. Maggie couldn't be here tonight. She's actually back at our wellness center seeing some kids, but she sent me instead, and I apologize. I too am a little under the weather. I'm here this evening because we help all of the children of Michigan. At our program, we provide them with free wigs and support services such as classes, social activities, field trips, and counseling when they're diagnosed with a hair loss disorder. Many times, it's children facing cancer or any disorder at all, alopecia, an autoimmune disorder causing hair loss, trichotillomania where they're pulling their hair out, even burn survivors. But everything we do is at no charge, and we've had 16 families from your community in the past come to receive help from our program. So, through the Community Development Black Grant, we are asking for $1,000 to help another child and their family in the coming year. We appreciate any funding you would be willing to provide. It will all go back to a child in your own community. And if you ever do know of a child in need, we do ask that you refer them to us. We help everybody, we charge nothing, we turn no one away. You can follow us on Facebook, you can learn more about us at wigsforkids.org, or you can contact us at 586-772-6656. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for me tonight.
Thank you. Any questions?
No ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oops. Here we go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dory Vaskas-Nolan. I am, my address is 49926 Willowood Drive in Macomb Township. And today I have with me Stephanie Steger, also a Macomb Township resident. I'm the Executive Director of CareHouse, the Macomb County Child Advocacy Center. Stephanie Steger is an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney who works with the Child Protection Unit in the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office. CareHouse is a children's advocacy center, locate, with our main location in Mount Clemens. We serve over 800 child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, and children that may have been a witness to violence annually. Our goals are to reduce the trauma that is typically associated with child abuse investigations and to help the child and non-offending family members on the road to healing. Sorry, I left my script in the printer today, so I got it up on my phone, so I'm sorry about that. We are one of 35 children's advocacy centers fully accredited in the state of Michigan, serving over 53 counties, and one of over 800 in the United States. We collaborate with all law enforcement jurisdictions in Macomb County, Children's Protective Services, the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office, medical and mental health professionals, as well as federal investigative agencies such as FBI, Homeland Security, and Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. Over 1 million children in the United States suffer from abuse and neglect every year, and child abuse is an epidemic. More children suffer from the trauma of child sexual abuse than from asthma and autism combined. Experts agree that the actual number of child victims is difficult to determine and probably much higher than what is reported. At CareHouse, excuse me, the types of cases that we see are, range from kid-on-kid sexual contact, the perpetration of sexual abuse on children by adults, serial sexual abusers, otherwise known as pedophiles, children who suffer from repeated, frequent, and sadistic forms of sexual, physical, sexual and physical abuse and torture, and sometimes unfortunately with the knowledge of a parent who is failing to protect them. More increasingly, we're seeing cases of child pornography and sex trafficking. And over 90% of child victims know their abuser. Those who molest children look and act just like anybody else. Abusers can be neighbors, friends, coaches, clergy, teachers, parents, and other family members. They can be adults or children, and they can be men or women. The children we serve come from every community in Macomb County, including Macomb Township, and they were spared the trauma of multiple interviews and provided with the tools that they needed to help them heal. After the forensic interview, CareHouse also offers supportive services to help the family on the road to healing, including crisis counseling, parent and child support groups, trauma-focused therapy sessions, child safety assessments, family advocacy, access to forensic medical examinations, and referrals to other needed community services. Also, CareHouse serves as the designated local counsel in Macomb County for the Michigan Children's Trust Fund, so we offer child abuse prevention, education, and training to professionals in our community as well as to the public at large. Families are never charged for any of the services that they receive at CareHouse, and we do serve all referred families. I'm also very proud to report that our, after our most recent... Families are never charged for any of the services that they receive at CareHouse, and we do serve all referred families. I'm also very proud to report that our, after our most recent independent financial audit, which was just presented to our board last week, eighty-six cents of every dollar that comes to CareHouse is devoted specifically to serving children and families in our community. Since we've opened in nineteen ninety-six, we've conducted over seven thousand child forensic interviews, and four hundred of those children were residents of Macomb Township. In two thousand seventeen, forty-six children came to CareHouse for forensic interviews and support services that were residents of Macomb Township. In two thousand eighteen was our highest number of interviews, seven hundred and fifty-three forensic interviews, and sixty of those children were residents of Macomb Township. We do depend on the support of the community to provide a voice for child victims and a place for them to be heard. We respectfully this year are requesting consideration for funding in the amount of six thousand dollars, which would support services for ten child victims and their families who would be residents of Macomb Township. Of course, we would also be grateful for any funding that you would designate to us. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here? Very well. Any questions from the board?
No ma'am, Chair. Not a question, but just a comment. Thank you to everybody who came up and spoke to the microphone tonight. You fill in the gaps of, you know, coming to the aid of a lot of citizens that government can't necessarily always do, and helping out people that we don't always see every day. I mentioned this last year, my wife's a social worker, and thank you for everything you do, and sometimes I hate that we have to make these kind of decisions up here. I wish we could fully fund all of you, but thank you.
Any other questions or statements?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that, working at Circuit Court, I have worked very closely with Turning Point and CareHouse, and I know what an amazing job they do. Not to take away from any of the other organizations, that's pretty amazing what they do. I do know how hard they do work, and it is a great thing that we have them. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll second that because I know very well, being a Kwanian for many years, that what, what an asset those organizations are.
Very well. I will close the public hearing. It is seven thirty-two, and Mr. Maher has advised me that we should have this in the form of a resolution. Anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, excuse me, Madam Chair, if I may. I'd like to make a motion, but what I'd like to do is I, there is a, on the second page, if you notice, there's a remaining service allocation of six thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, if each one of my board members up here would maybe start listening to this, it would be great. Maybe we start with sixty-six ninety-three, then give a thousand dollars to Turning Point, a thousand dollars to Wigs, a thousand dollars to CareHouse, and the balance of thirty-six ninety-three to St. Isidore's. That would be my motion.
Motion by Mr. Krizminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goody, and I didn't get a chance to write them all down, so to approve the funds as suggested by Mr. Krizminski.
Let me re-say it again.
Yes, please.
Okay. The amount, we starting at sixty-six ninety-three, a thousand dollars to Turning Point.
Okay.
A thousand dollars to Wigs, and a thousand dollars to CareHouse, and the balance left is thirty-six ninety-three to St. Isidore's.
Three-six-nine-three.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll on that?
Yes, ma'am supervisor. I just want to double-check the, the seniors still get their CD?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Does that have to be a part of this?
Taken out of that automatically.
Automatically, okay. I just wanted to verify.
Well, we would certainly include that as part of the funding resolution, as itemized in the proposed CDBG allocation.
Okay.
I believe that's part of your motion.
Yes. The balance, would you like me to state the balance of the barriers of one hundred and five-five-seventy-nine, the minor home repair of twelve thousand dollars, the senior program of twenty-five thousand dollars, and the MCA senior chore at seventy-five hundred dollars for a total of one fifty-six-seven-seven-two?
Thank you.
Would you call the roll? Yes. Trustee Krizminski?
Yes.
Treasurer Goody?
Yes.
Trustee Bustano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everybody that came. We will move on now to new business, and this is Broadcast Media. And this is a request to approve base equipment with alternate bid number two from AVI Systems in the amount of seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Mr. Gillis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, board members. Tonight I have before you a request from my department to swap out the cameras, switching, recording, and presentation equipment to a new system. The current system we have in place here was put in place in March of two thousand six. This project was put on mitten with the assistance of the purchasing department. Two qualified bids were returned. I am suggesting that we go with AVI Systems for the low bid of seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. Thank you.
Jim, that's still the original equipment that we started off with?
Ninety percent of this room is original, yes.
How much outdated is it?
Tremendously. It's at end-of-life, beyond end-of-life.
Beyond the end-of-life?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I, just one question. This is going to make me look, this high-definition that this one individual came up here to talk about, but you didn't realize it was thirteen years old.
We're going to get HD cameras regardless, because that's all you can buy now, but I can turn them to SD if you like.
Doesn't make a difference to me. It'll shine off my head anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillis. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Madam Supervisor, if I may. Jim, can you explain for those who don't understand end-of-life? So, that generally, from what I understand, is to replace it or repair it is actually more expensive because it doesn't exist.
Correct. Let's knock on wood, because the system obviously will take a few months to build. None of the major core components have broke, but we have swapped out recording devices. We got a new projector last year after it failed. So, there is equipment that's ending, so we need to make sure that we stay ahead of, let's not replace something as it's broken, let's, let's get ahead of the curve. I would note that Shelby Township and Clinton Township did this upgrade to their, to their council chambers in the last twelve months as well.
And also, can, do you have an idea of how many residents watch our board meetings?
Obviously, the stuff that's on cable is not trackable, but I do receive YouTube hits, and it ebbs and flows with the content of the meetings, obviously, and then that nature, but there really isn't a quantitative way to indicate how many people actually watch these on the various platforms that it is available.
On average, how many YouTube hits do you think you get?
Between five and six hundred. I would say Clinton Township's less than a hundred, Shelby Township between one hundred and one fifty. My experience has been over the last twelve months, because I do track this. Your board meetings on YouTube do outpace your neighbors.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, just had a comment and a question. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Gillis, for the way you presented this bid tonight. I'm going to explain it in my comments. I won't bore with you, bore you with right now, but you'll understand that in my comments. But I am, so, I think the way this was presented, it looked like it was only to, and this is what we're kind of getting at, only to give us the HD enhancement. So, how long, how much longer do you think this equipment would last? I know it's original equipment, but, because the way this was presented in the bid, it just didn't say we need to upgrade equipment. It was like for the purpose of broadcasting in HD, and I think that's where some of the confusion might be coming in with residents and others. How much longer do you think this equipment would last?
I believe it would, it could die at any moment, to be honest with you, as per you would have with your own personal video cameras, TVs at home, DVD, VCR combos. Obviously, those things probably are replaced in the home, the home setting, at least every five to ten years at max. We're at thirteen years in a room that's used weekly by this township, and I think I outlined in the bid, the full bid packet, it explained new monitors, new distribution. Right now, we're using VGA. We need to go to HDMI. A lot of the equipment that's in here that, if it were to break, you'd have to replace it with some sort of an HD equivalent. Let's, I don't want to get tied up on the, on the fact of, you know, it's an HD camera. Everything you buy now is HD. Your iPhone is an HD camera, so I wouldn't get so stuck on the terminology. Now, if I was presenting with 4K and 8K, which are the new trends that are coming, obviously, I'm kind of now at the, at the lowest minimum end of what this, this meeting could be, yes.
So, HD is just a benefit of us updating the equipment, but we need to update the equipment.
Correct.
That's important for my vote, too.
Absolutely.
Okay. Jim, if something minor were to go wrong, could you find parts for it?
The switcher probably, the switcher and cameras probably not. Power supplies and things of that nature. Obviously, the, the, the projectors and stuff, the cables you see under here, those power supplies, we had to get those from China, because you couldn't buy them off-stuff from Extron anymore. So, and power supplies are, are one of the more likely things that fail in these systems, because they're on 24/7. They heat up, they cool down, they heat up, they cool down. Ultimately, a diode breaks, and you have to get a new power supply. So, some of the monitors, we can get replacements for. Obviously, they're going to be big CRTs, not really small type, type things, but, um...
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one more question for you. I, after reviewing your information, you had mentioned that you have planned for this advancement in the technology for several years. Can you explain, explain what you, what you did in measures of budgeting for this?
Sure. And about three years ago, I indicated to our finance director, to the supervisors, to the budgeting process, that I would like to start putting away some of the money towards future big purchases. So, at that point in time, if you were to go back and look at the, the last three years of budgets, not this current budget year, but the three previous years, you'll notice that there was a twenty-five thousand dollar transfer, so that I was preparing for getting this project paid for by setting aside twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the previous three budget years, not this recent budget year, the previous three budget years, to help offset this cost. Obviously, most of the items of the equipment that's in my facilities and such are approaching twelve, thirteen, fourteen years of age, so I'm going to have to be rebuilding and retrofitting a lot of that equipment. In two thousand fifteen, we retrofitted our, our SD cameras in the field to an HD field camera, because that would be the only camera you could really buy to suffice for that. Obviously, the boardroom is a very important room for stuff that we broadcast. We need to take a look at the studio, and then we have to look at playback. Now, playback's a little bit different, because we're playing back to streaming services on AT&amp;T U-verse. We're playing back on Comcast through their SD fiber connec system, and then we also have our YouTube channel. All three of those signals require different source feed, so I have to make sure that everything we're doing ultimately gets squashed down to SD to be seen at home, because Comcast does not broadcast public access channels in HD. But I would suggest to state that our streaming value is greater than our cable TV penetration value, so it's more important for our signal to be quality on a streaming device, which could be streamed to YouTube in Thailand if you're on vacation, where tying it to your Comcast local provider may not be the best way to do it. So, all the equipment we're, we're gauging for and moving towards is to have that wide reach with our streaming capabilities. Did that answer your question?
And then some.
Okay. Thank you. I'd spend, I'd spend the better part of the last nine months researching and getting this project together, and I would like to commend the purchasing department. They were instrumental in getting this on the mitten system. I believe I was one of the first to jump on board that after the first year, and that process is a learning curve that we're all going to go through, but it was helpful to, to get that information out. Obviously, if you saw on your board packet, this, this went out to a rather wide net of vendors that were capable of buying this. Over thirty people did download documents. We had seven people at the bid, at the walkthrough, but only two of those bidders were competent to, to get us a qualified bid. Anything else?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may. One comment is that there is, I looked in your budget, there's eighty-five thousand dollars that you, you have put in the way, so just...
So, I gauged that pretty close then, didn't I?
You did well. I got to compliment...
Appreciate that.
The exquisite.
Because you were worried about that last year, if I remember correctly.
Yes, I was. Yes, I was. I did bring that up. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gillis.
Anyone else? Very well. Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the purchase of this for seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty-five ninety-six.
Motion by Mr. Krizminski?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to approve the base equipment from AVI Systems as recommended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Clerk's Office request to approve purchase of agenda management software. Ms. Rogers?
Good evening. Thank you. We're looking at updating, streamlining, modernizing the board agenda and minutes creation process. We've done some research, and we've come up with the solution that the county Board of Commissioners has been using for some time. It's the Civic Plus is the vendor. They currently are the vendor for the website, the township's website, so we kind of see a, kind of a seamless transition into the, with the board. The Civic Clerk product, it's a web-based, mobile-responsive interface. There's no software. You'd log in. All of the agenda submitters would have a password and permissions set up, and they would submit their agenda items. Is there any, any other questions?
Any questions from the board?
I'd just like to add to Rogers' presentation that both Planning Commission and ZBA and any other commissions in the township can benefit from the software as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, one question. Can, how about HR Department or anybody else can use this, or what's the deal?
There are modules offered for HR. There's also one that's offered for the REC Center. The REC Center did review it and found that it's not something that they were interested in, and I believe, I want to speak for Mr. Assorti, but he's considering or looking into it for the future.
Okay. Just want to make sure that, you know...
It would be separate, just totally separate from ours anyways.
Oh, it would be, okay.
Yeah.
But can we piggyback off it to get the price?
Yeah, actually, Cynthia did a great job in strong-arming this contract as well. She actually got a lower percent than what Mr. Gillis got several years ago, and she could probably work the same negotiations for Mr. Assorti as well.
All right, cool. That'd be great, then, you know, if we can update that, update whatever we can within the township.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
I agree.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to approve the Clerk's Office purchase and implementation of agenda management software from Civic Plus in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars with annual service fees of seven thousand two hundred. Motion by Ms. Goody?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the purchase of the agenda management software. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a request to amend the Building Department file conversion project. Mr. Pierce?
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. Some time ago, it'd come before you with a multi-year project of converting the files that the base, that the building department contained in the basement, and if any of you have been down there, you'd seen some row shelving, about five high, that was stacked with over two hundred boxes, as well as about a hundred and eighty-four file cabinets. And at the time, be honest with you, I thought it'd probably be a lot easier than what it ended up being, but we've finally gone through all the boxes and got the, and completed that task, and through some audits, and, and of those boxes, we're able to reduce the footprint of paper that we thought we were going to have to scan. As we're getting ready to move on to the file cabinets, however, the Building Department had, through their growth, come through a need that they, the space they were using for the residential files that they were containing upstairs needed to be moved so they could turn that area into a plan review room. That necessitated them bringing a hundred and sixty more additional large banker boxes down into the basement that ultimately need to be brought in digitally into our system. What I'm requesting is that I be allowed to incorporate those boxes into my scanning project so that we can do a couple of things. One, eliminate the footprint that they're taking up down there, and two, get those into the system, because those are more current residences that they look at on a more often basis. We have a surplus right now of about thirty thousand dollars of the budget that I think we can come pretty close, maybe capturing some of that. The other thing is, right now, my original estimate had been we'd be about thirty thousand dollars less. I think we might be able to bring in about twenty thousand, that even under twenty thousand dollars. We've been doing some of the scanning ourselves as far as the large format plans, and that saved us some money. So, in order for me to be able to incorporate those boxes and move down, I need authorization from the board to add that to the original project, and that is what I'm asking for.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, just one, Chuck. Is there... Is there, since I'm always looking to two, three years from now, is there anything that what we're doing now that we should be upgrading, maybe to use the iCloud or something or other? And I don't know, I'm asking, because you do this all the time. So I'm wondering, would that increase our capabilities of storage of what we're using now?
Storage is...
Laserfish, right?
We are, and the platform, that is the software we use to bring the thing in. The information is stored on multiple types, like a Scandis device. Moving it to the cloud is always an option, is something that a number of years ago had been brought up with our contractor and spoken about it, and was part of the concerns that we had brought up regarding a disaster recovery plan that we had been asked for recommendations and we had made. And it's definitely a possibility, but right now, I don't know that that is something that they're looking to implement.
Okay. And the only reason is, I know the MTA convention's coming up, and I know I'll be looking or talking to whatever vendors are out there of where we could move from three or four years from now of how we can, to go to that place. You know what I mean?
It's always a good thing. Right now, we store a backup of the digital information we have offsite, and that is at the Water and Sewer Department, which is exceptional that we have it in another location. Unfortunately, I can't tell you that tornado is not going to hit here and not hit that building either. So if you do have the information stored in a cloud and with multiple redundancies that they, those companies usually have, for instance, there's a large cloud, for lack of a better term, content corporations in Colorado, they keep, they have their stuff there, they have it available in California and multiple different places. The availability to lose information now is negated by a large fold, so...
Correct.
It's definitely something that I think we should look at and be part of our overall disaster recovery efforts.
Right. And I'll use you, with the background of being Navy and everything else, I know we keep a lot of our classifieds Colorado, all around the states and wherever, and it's just something that we have to have, and I think that the township should also be going to that particular position, is that we should be always updating of where we're at compared to where we were.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Yes. Thank you, Chuck.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else with a question?
Madam Chair, if there's no discussion, I would move on the suggestion, I would make a motion to go ahead and amend the contract for 30. Is that what it is, Chuck?
If you could amend the Building Department file conversion to include the additional 160 boxes.
Just to say the 160...
160 boxes.
160 boxes. Madam Chair, I'll go ahead to amend it to be...
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Maybe.
For 160 boxes.
Second it.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the amended Building Department file conversion project in the amount of 160 boxes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request to approve a formal application for Class C liquor license for AR workshop. Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, board members. Before you have a request for a formal application for a Class C liquor license, they did come before the board, I believe in September, received approval on their prequalification. They have met all the requirements per our application process, as well as that of the state. Paperwork has been submitted, and the next process would be to adopt the resolution allowing them to make their final formal application with the state, pay their fees with the state in order to allow them to be open. This has been proved by the Planning Commission as well, gone through that review process, and they have met all the requirements of the township.
Do we need to make this resolution?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Any questions?
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the formal application for a Class C liquor license for AR workshop to be located at 48840 Romeo Plank, McComb, Michigan, 48044.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve the formal application for the Class C liquor license for AR workshop. Would you call a roll?
Ms. Madam Supervisor, Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Busenow?
Yes.
Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, board members.
This resolution is adopted. Human Resources has a request to authorization to initiate the recruitment process for a building inspector. Mr. Assorti.
Madam Chair, members of the board, early last year, this board approved the Human Resources to initiate the recruitment process for the position of building inspector. The result of that recruitment process was less than favorable, as determined by, obviously, by Mr. Maples. With that, we came back in October of 2018, and this board approved the revision of the building inspector position description, and now that's, and that was approved in October. Now that that's done, Mr. Maples feels it's time again to go back to start the recruitment process over again with the new position description on the issue that was approved by you all last year. So with that, I'm just asking that the Human Resources Department be permitted to initiate the recruitment process for building inspector.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to authorize Human Resources Department to initiate the recruitment process for building inspector.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to begin this recruitment process for building inspector. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have a request to authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement for technology support services with BPI. Mr. Assorti, you have been in contact with BPI?
Correct. Madam Chair, is this, everyone, probably everyone in the room's well aware, the request for proposals was put out in October of last year, and with that, in December 19th of 2018, this board approved the proposal submitted by BPI. That BPI agreement included a sample agreement, and since that time, working with purchasing and then with BPI, we've come up with an agreement that incorporates both the request for, the terms and conditions of the request for proposal itself, the response that was submitted by BPI, and terms and conditions that we previously requested. So with that, I'd ask for authorization for the supervisor to execute the agreement for technology support services.
Any questions?
Madam Supervisor, Mr. Assorti, could you explain that the supervisor would need to sign that contract versus the purchasing specialist?
I guess this board could authorize the purchasing specialist to sign it, but that would be inconsistent with anything that we've ever done here at the township. It's a common practice of this board in most communities that the, you know, that the supervisor and/or clerk from time to time sign contracts that are entered into on behalf of the, on behalf of the township. What we did in this particular case is we put out an RFP. That RFP was approved. We've then done a contract. I'm working with the purchasing specialist now, and we're, since she's working on some things, we're working on a program such that hopefully, on some of these types of things, we can include the contract in the future that's right in the proposal, so there's only one approval needed. But there will always be opportunities, especially with proposals, that where everything's a little different, where the contract's negotiated. So I worked with Cynthia on this, and we talked with BPI. It was kind of our first go-around, so it maybe didn't go as fast as we hope it will in the future, but it was, it's always appropriate to have, you know, the supervisory and/or clerk to sign those types of contracts.
Madam Supervisor, I would just like to say that, you know, I've expressed my concern with the contract, the vendor. It has nothing to do with the services that they provide. What I would like to see for the township is that we get to a point where we can outsource our IT services on an as-needed basis versus a full-time. Unfortunately, we are not there at this point, but I hope to achieve that goal in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Looking for a motion here.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion on this to award the contract to BPI and have the chair sign the contract.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to authorize the supervisor to sign the agreement. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The Engineering Department has a request to approve a variance of the engineering standards for Castle Rock Retail Center. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, this is for a small piece of property that is on Hall Road, basically between the Dairy Queen, east of North Avenue, and the car dealership at the railroad tracks. This is a leftover piece from when M59 was widened, so it's a commercial piece, but it's relatively small. The developer, it doesn't have enough room to put the traditional detention basin that would be required for the site because there really is no adequate drainage outlet other than the M59 right-of-way. So they're asking for us to approve a variance that would allow for stormwater storage to occur in the parking lot, on the parking lot surface, versus in a traditional detention basin. We have been reviewing the plans that the developer has submitted, and we're comfortable with what they're proposing and are recommending approval, subject to the conditions that were in the recommendation letter that's in your board packet. Be happy to answer any questions.
Jim, we've done this before, haven't we?
Yeah. Yes, we have.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Very well. Are there any motions in this matter?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the request for variance of the engineering standards for Castle Rock Retail Center.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Busenow to authorize the variance as requested. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Now we have the request to approve installation of streetlights at the intersection of 24 Mile and Foss Road and 24 Mile and Card Road at township cost. Mr. Van Tiflin again.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board. At a previous board meeting, the board asked me to obtain some estimates for installing streetlights at the intersection of 24 Mile and Foss and 24 Mile and Card. DTE has provided those estimates to us. They're in your board packet. The cost of the two lights for the installation is $758.10, with the annual lamp charge being Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the installation of streetlights at the intersections of 24 Mile and Foss and 24 Mile and Card Road at McComb Township Cost.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the installation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
No.
That motion does carry. Now we will move on to a change order, number two, for the 2015 pathway gap closure program. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board, this is change order number two for a 2015 pathway gap closure program. There's one item that needed to be changed that had to do with inspection days. The contractor went way over on their number of inspection days, so it actually cost them money. So this would, will mean a credit to the project of $27,200, and we're recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion on this to go ahead and approve the decrease in the contract.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
$27,200.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the change order. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is a pay estimate, number three, and this is the final one for the 2015 pathway gap closure program. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board, this is the final pay certificate for a 2015 pathway gap closure, and is in the amount of $8,022.74. This does include the change order that you just approved. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion on the pay estimate, number three, for the Engineering Department.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve pay estimate, number three, as proposed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the last one is authorization to begin design work for the Senior Center Media Center Stormwater Detention. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the board, at the last board meeting, the fire chief was authorized to add the additional stormwater detention that the Department of Roads is requiring for the Public Safety Building on 23 Mile Road. At that meeting, I had mentioned that there was going to be some additional cost to the township for stormwater detention for the balance of the site. The county is requiring that we provide detention, not only for the new portion of the site, which is the fire station, Public Safety Building, but also the balance of it, which is the media center and the senior center in the back. We have looked into how best to have this constructed. We feel that the better cost to the township would be to include it in with the fire station work, I'm sorry, the Public Safety Building work. We'll get the best price that way, and so I've included the estimates that we've obtained from AW, who is running that project for the township. The total cost is $248,645. I should mention that the $218,135 is for the stormwater detention. There is a stormwater quality device that's also required. That wasn't included in the estimate that the chief had given you, but that will be included in the cost to the Public Safety Building, and that is $30,510. So we're recommending approval. This is something that we have to do if we want to meet the county's requirements, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, on the advice of the Engineering Department, I would like to make a motion to authorize to begin design work for the Senior slash Media Center and Stormwater Retention, Detention.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to begin the design work on the stormwater detention at the Senior Center Media Center. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Water and Sewer has a request to approve payment for emergency water main repair. Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. Tonight, Water and Sewer is in front of you requesting we pay invoice to Dan's Escavating in the amount of $98,612.90. This will be for emergency water main repair that took place on the 11-2 and 11-3. The other thing I might add is this contractor is on the township's prequal list, and that was the reason for choosing this, one of the many reasons for choosing this contractor. I might add, I had numerous conversations and emails with the three full-time elected officials on this over the course of 48 hours, and this was a very tedious project, and time was of the essence, so I'm recommending we move on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve payment for emergency water main repair to Dan's Escavating in the amount that Jerry stated.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve the payment of the emergency water main repair. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
The Fire Department has a request to approve purchase of extrication equipment. Chief Phillips.
Excuse me, Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to purchase extrication equipment, or what's better known as jaws of life, for the new Squad 1 that was ordered in November 2017 and was recently delivered. I'm recommending the battery-powered tools instead of the traditional tools that operate from hydraulic hoses and a power unit. The battery-operated tools provide us with more flexibility and are easier to operate. We did research other models. We did a hands-on demonstration where we compared the recommended model along with a different manufacturer. The firefighters that were involved in the side-by-side demonstration recommended that we stay with the current Hearst brand that we have. Due to territorial agreements, we're only able to purchase the extrication tools from from one dealer that covers Michigan. Due to only one vendor, I'm unable to obtain the three bids for the equipment. The purchasing specialist has reviewed the process and has stated it meets the township purchasing policy. The total cost for the cutter, the spreader, ram, and the AC adapter is $30,000. This purchase was included in the fire improvement budget for this current fiscal year, and with that, I'm recommending that the extrication equipment be purchased from Apollo Fire Equipment at a total cost of $30,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Madam Chair, if I may, upon the recommendation of the awesome chief, I'd like to recommend the buying of the extraction equipment in an amount of $30,000 from Apollo Fire.
Motion by Mr. Krasminski?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the purchase of the extrication equipment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Supervisor's Office has a request to authorize the Supervisor to sign the resolution and letter of support of joint land use study in cooperation with Selfridge Air National Guard Base. Couple of weeks ago, Mr. Maher and myself were rather twisted our arms to come and sit in on this presentation by Selfridge Air Force Base, and they're trying to get support of any community that is in the vicinity of Selfridge, even if it only includes a fly-by or a fly-over. If we're in the pathway of that, they wanted our support. So, I have included the sample resolution and the letter of support for your review. If you decide you want to do this, we will formalize it, and Madam Clerk will send it out. Any questions?
No, ma'am. I would move on, I would make a motion to go ahead and have, is it the clerk going to sign it this time, or is it going to be the?
It's a resolution.
The resolution, okay.
Yeah, I'll get to sign. Oh, you mean the letter of support?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be me.
Okay, good, I just want to make sure. Can the clerk sign it too if she wanted to?
Sure.
Okay, good.
If she puts her name on the bottom.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Krasminski?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to sign the resolution and send a letter of support as requested. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, Trustee Krasminski?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Busno?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. This resolution is adopted. Number 22 has been removed from the agenda.
Postponed.
I'm sorry?
Postponed.
Postponed from the agenda?
Yep.
So, we're left with number 23, which is a discussion on the status of the proposed ethics ordinance, including discussion relating to the selection of a new special meeting date. Mr. Busno, you asked for this on the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. Before I make a couple of comments, I want to thank Mr. Jelios and Mr. Montea, who both gave a lot of time on that committee and were important enough to come up and speak to the microphone tonight. Couple of my things that I'm going to state here, you kind of gave a preview and already stated, but I just want to kind of recap where we're at today in the process of adopting an ethics ordinance. In 2017, there were two community ethics ordinance meetings held at the north branch of the Clinton McCombe Library. These meetings were attended by community activists, former elected officials, current elected officials, current and former employees, and residents engaging themselves in the political process for the first time. As a result of those meetings, in the early months of 2018, we as a board decided to create an ethics ordinance committee that would pursue a possible ethics ordinance. The six of us who sat on the board at the time all nominated somebody to sit on that board with the purpose of developing a potential ethics ordinance. This committee was made up of current and former employees and community activists. That volunteer committee convened 10 times between March of 2018 and September of 2018. In September of 2018, that committee provided us with a draft of a possible ethics ordinance that was based in the county ethics ordinance, which our clerk worked under at one point, and trustee Smith continues to work under. On October 3, 2018, I remember that date well because it was my birthday, there was a special meeting called to review the proposed ethics ordinance and to ask questions of the committee's members. At that meeting, there was a commitment to hold another meeting. December 2018 became a target date. Then, we had a trustee resign, and the focus of that date became appointing his successor. Having outlined where we're at, I would like for us to discuss the status of this draft and hopefully set a new special meeting date to further pursue this.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, just a comment prior to whatever is going to be done, is that at the MTA, there's going to be possibly a class, Township's Two, it's called, and that I hope all of our trustees are going to attend this class, because it's kind of interesting, because it happens to be about, I'll just give you a little bit of what it say, about having frank conversations about harassment and discrimination, delve into investigations, interactions, and learn how to address the situation. So, and it's done by MTA, so there are going to always be qualified people there. I'm just giving you it as a comment, you go to the MTA, you can go to this class, so. It's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
Roger, I totally respect that comment, but we did appoint a committee who worked 10 meetings over months, volunteer, no pay. And they came up with the draft of an ordinance that has been able to address harassment and improper use of government facilities, and been able to actually bring some action to some of those actions that you talk about that we really haven't had the power or will or courage to do up to this point. You know, I understand that comment about MTA, but what did we choose this committee for? I tell you, if you came to the October 3 meeting, their presentation was articulate. There were some questions that they maybe couldn't answer on a legal level, but it was articulate. We all appointed a member. They gave us an ethics ordinance that I, basically, all we got to do is tweak their work, I would think legally, just to make sure that we address this. I don't know why we're afraid of an ethics ordinance. I work under extreme ethics in my employer, or as a teacher, not just my employer, public school teachers. I have a strict ethics code that I have to live by. For example, if I was charged with certain misdemeanors and felonies, if I don't even report that to my employer within 48 hours, it's grounds to terminate me. I work under that kind of ethics. I just don't know what are we doing with this draft? For those of you who were at the meeting, it was a great meeting, and I met some people for the first time. And, you know, the person you appointed, Roger, was a very, very articulate gentleman. You know, he's a guy I wish I could turn to probably for advice on things. We have some very capable people that came up with a great ethics ordinance draft. I don't think we need any more workshops.
Madam Chair, I'd like to respond. Mr. Busno, I was just telling you that there's a class there, nothing else. It was just a comment. I don't know where you were going with what you were talking about. All I'm telling you is that was a class that was being offered, nothing else.
How would that class change their ordinance that they drafted?
Got nothing to do with the ordinance. All I was telling you was a class, that's all, nothing more than that, Mr. Busno.
Okay, so what are we going to do with? What are we going to do with the draft ordinance that they presented us? Are we putting it in a file, or was it to buy time for, I don't know, what? Why did we put six volunteers through 10 meetings, 20 hours of their time, and they came up with a gray document? Why are we not addressing that document?
Madam Chair, if I may, I believe this is the reason that you put this on the agenda, and two of the members that were involved in the ordinance are here. I believe that what you would like to see is one more discussion to tweak whatever people have a problem with. Is that a fair assessment?
Correct. I would like to work through some of the legal. You know, you were at that meeting, some of the legal questions we have, and we either support it or not. And I would like each and every trustee to vote on that ethics ordinance. We may approve it, we may not approve it, but I don't, you know, that document is sitting there.
Yes. Forgive me for interrupting. I say that with that in mind, you would like to have a date where we would discuss this?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make that motion. And at that time, what we can do is do the tweaking, and at that same time, decide whether we want to go forward with it. Is that fair?
Correct. And if that date was after the MTA conference, where maybe a couple more things could be brought to that special session, then.
Does that?
And so be it. You know, I don't want a workshop to replace that draft that they have.
Okay, I understand, and that seems fair.
Now, the other question I have, Tom, no offense, but I remember at that meeting, we had concerns about you being able to have time to look at it. Do you think you're? Okay.
Do you want me to address it?
Okay, yeah.
So, I did take a look at it, and I've corresponded several times with Mr. Jelios. I don't know if that was communicated with the entire board or not, but certainly with Mr. Jelios. As I indicated at the meeting, there were several legal concerns about what was proposed. And what I proposed to Mr. Jelios is that we, rather than being all over the map, we start with two very serious ones and work our way from there. The first one was, is that under the draft ordinance, the ethics boards determines who commits a municipal civil infraction. That they basically had a hearing process to determine who committed it without any means of enforcing that. The only way to means to enforce it would be to turn it over to me, to turn it over to our prosecutor, to have it prosecuted as a municipal civil infraction at the local district court level. That would mean we'd start all over again with a hearing process, and of course, a judge could make the same decision that the board made, or a different decision. To me, I'm not aware of any other type of community situation where you would have a board like that make a determination on a violation or an actual municipal civil infraction. Certainly a recommendation to the judge to do it, but what we had was there. I conveyed that information to them. I got, I received in return several other bits and pieces of other communities' municipal civil infractions provisions that I felt were consistent with what I did, and I haven't heard anything to that. The second part was, is that the draft FOIA, or excuse me, the draft ordinance would require that complaints filed under that system would not be subject to disclosure under FOIA. First, I found that to not be very transparent, which I understood was the intent of the ordinance in the first place, that we could hide them. I don't feel, and I've spoken with the clerk about this, I don't think anybody believes that those complaints, once they're filed, they're public documents, they're subject to FOIA. Somebody FOI's them, they've got to be produced. That's been my position. I've provided the specific detailed provisions of the FOIA Act to Mr. Jelios, and I got in response, the act back saying this provision trumps that. So, I don't agree with that position. The committee obviously can disagree with my legal opinion on it, but that's where we are with those two issues. Until you get over those two, I don't know how you get to the next level of some of the other items. Those are major concerns that if you adopt this ordinance, could create huge problems.
So, do we have, at this point, a living document draft that addresses those issues that maybe you scratched out, or, I hate to say this, that the Ethics Committee meets again to address this and represent that proposal? Is that document somewhere? Are those things being addressed, or are we striking it out, or?
I provided that last, I believe, November to Mr. Jelios, and I got back, "We disagree with you." And so, I guess that's where we are with it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
MTA also has an ethics boot camp class at that time, and I think it's going to discuss, you're going to be able to see what other communities have. There's going to be open discussions on that type of thing. Ms. Smith is just joining us, she wasn't at the workshop. I think this class will help her to understand what we're trying to do. It is very important, I don't want to rush it. I'm suggesting the date for another workshop to be after MTA, possibly in April, whatever date we. We're in MTA the first week in April. So, around the board meetings. April 17, I believe.
It's in between the two meetings.
That's in between the two meetings?
Yeah, the meeting's on the 10th and the 24th.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to set a workshop for the ethics. I have information that I've been collecting all along, if Ms. Smith wants to see that. That way, she can get up to speed too. She wants to be able to vote, I'm sure, with knowing what's going on.
And I like what you just said. As long as we're moving to a vote, I'm not going to say we're moving to an ethics ordinance, because that's going to, we don't know who's going to support one. But as long as this work is moving towards a vote, that's what I want to know. Because it's kind of stalled, and it stalled because we lost a trustee. I get it, so.
And the holidays and everything else. So, you know, we've always been wanting to come back. With these classes there, I think it's going to be beneficial to all of us. There's places where you can ask questions. The one, this class is being, the speaker is an attorney from Foster Swift, so she'll be very valuable as well. So, I'm going to make a motion that we set the next workshop for April the 17th. I think we did it at 6 o'clock.
Right.
Before, at 6 o'clock.
And I know our former deputy supervisor was kind of the liaison. Is there like a new liaison? Is like, is there going to be, I know we have a couple of committee members here, but is there going to be somebody that's going to send the announcement to the Ethics Committee that this is when the next meeting is? Like, you know what I'm saying? Our former deputy supervisor was kind of handling that.
Is that what he's talking, what are you saying?
Our former?
This is going to be, this is going to be a special board meeting for the board.
But correct. So, our former deputy supervisor used to communicate this to the Ethics Committee. She was the liaison, we appointed her the liaison. So, what I'm talking about is, besides the two committee members we have here tonight, is it going to be the supervisor, the clerk, me? Who's going to send the whole Ethics Committee this date that we're about ready to set? That's what I mean.
I will do it.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Goodhue. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Ms. Nevers to set April 17 at 6:00 PM as a workshop meeting.
Before we vote on that, Madam Chair, I just want to make sure there's clarification. So, there seems to be a major hang-up on what Mr. Assorti had indicated were two major problems in the ethics ordinance in order for it to be moved forward. So, Mr. Assorti, will you be in contact with Mr. Jelios to try and overcome that, or resolve it, or change it between now and April 17, so that we're not addressing those two same issues?
Well, I don't think there's any other issues. They, Mr. Jelios disagrees with my legal opinion, so I don't know what else to do at this point on whether or not the complaints are subject to FOIA disclosure or not. So, I mean, that's simple.
Maybe that's something we can find out from.
That is, right. We could look into that more. If he's got something else, or the committee has something else that they relied on in drafting that, I'd be happy to see it. But I'll, I've got no problem communicating with them, right? I mean, right, Jim? We, yeah, right. So, we'll.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we overcome that hurdle, and then we can address new things at the workshop, so we're not just bringing that back up at the same time.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Also, may I, Madam Chair, if I may, on that particular issue, because of those two issues there, that would have to be clarified before we go because of how it's going to affect this township and the liabilities that it's going to be handled. And that's the biggest problem that I see. Is that if you already told them and they said no, well, then we've got to go to what legal says.
Well, I'll make sure that I clarify exactly what their position is. I'll get with the committee through Mr. Jelios and make sure I clarify what the committee's position is. what the committee's position is relative to those two issues.
Okay, thank you, Ms., thank you, Madam Chair.
Correct, because I would like the committee to have a chance to respond to what's being said up here, you know, just to make sure we're on the same page, and at that next special meeting, you know, maybe some of this can be answered too.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Next, we have public comments.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, when we were looking at that, I want to double check to make sure that's not Easter week.
Doesn't make a difference. It's April the 17th.
When is Easter?
Palm Sunday's on the 14th.
Sunday before.
Okay. Okay? I think we're okay, yeah. All right. Thank you.
I didn't think of that.
Public comments on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name. Remember, there's a three-minute time limit.
Madam Supervisor, Rob Montilla, from the, speaking on behalf of the Ethics Committee again. I hope you indulge me, I know this is for non-agenda items, but it's kind of the continuation here. So I just want to level set on behalf of the committee. The whole point of that workshop was part of a collaborative effort. We didn't have any legal opinions or involvement prior to that particular session. It was the first time we had advice. There's conversations going back and forth. We had some good input from the board, good input that we thought from the committee. We would expect that type of collaboration to continue, perhaps Mr. Assorti and, and Mr. Jelios will get those lines of communication going again, because that's, that's exactly what we're looking for. And again, the source material is from other existing ethics ordinances, so whether that worked for them and doesn't work for us, well, that's great. We can, we can work within that and, and understand Mr. Assorti's opinions on that. And I don't think the committee has any disregard for Mr. Assorti's opinions, but I, I think there is something, want to make sure that, I don't think we're happy with the characterization, because we are working in a collaborative fashion. We want to make sure that this is gonna work with the board's approval for something that's gonna benefit the community, and I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. This is a collaborative effort that we want to do from the Ethics Committee along with the board, and I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page in that regard. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Non-agenda item. Mark Grabow, address is on file. Just a couple things I want to touch base. Guys have put the Clinton Library off to the side temporarily. I'm gonna ask the board to go back and review the things that we did years ago. Guys, we're all part of this. Take a look at that. Let's be conscious of what we're doing with this property. Let's be conscious of the investment. This area was designed to bring the community together. Let's think about that. You guys had an opportunity to bring the courts over here with great opportunity to enhance the area and create this as a walkable community. The design, the pattern was there. TCC was put together for a reason. There's been numerous times TCC's been taken to court, or reviewed over and over, and we all know what I'm talking about, over the builders, over the designs. Everything failed and stalled, starting in 2008, 2007, when the crash happened. There's an opportunity to bring this back. Let's put it back together the way it's supposed to be. It's time to build this community and bring it together. You guys are very clear at not building community, and I want to make sure you guys step up and get it done. It's done. First time ever I've seen someone other than the supervisor actually dealing with community block grant. Mr. Marhar, you did a great job. You did her job. Now, this Ethics Committee, for God's sakes, people, stop stalling. Let's get it done. We are the township that is leading in indictments. We ought to be ashamed of ourselves and step this up and get it done today. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is still Kathy Western. I was pleased to see the approval of funding upgrades to broadcast media. Residents receive a lot of value from these services. I'm hoping in the near future that these board meetings could be livestreamed online, but I understand that might require even more upgrades. In the meantime, something that could be done for little to no cost would be to upload the videos of the meetings of the Planning Commission and ZBA, so they could be viewed online or on the government access channel, the same way these board meetings are. As you know, much of the essential work of the township takes place in those committee meetings. There is also a great deal of education and information that goes on there, thanks to the staff who provide things like slide programs, and the committee members with their thoughtful discussion and their interaction with residents during the meetings. These meetings sometimes have very large crowds, and for many residents, it is their first up-close contact with our township government. And they're not very happy about the issue for which they're there. For some, it is also a physical and logistical challenge for them to attend these meetings. You know, they're leaving work early, they're skipping meals, they're having to arrange childcare or bring their children with them. Many have never been to Township Hall and run in breathlessly late as they've encountered the locked front doors of the building. The residents who do attend then go back and try to convey the information to their neighbors through conversation and social media. I can tell you about how that goes. How much better it would be for everyone, how much easier if the videos were online and on the government access channel, and people were able to get the information they need firsthand. It would be a great service to the community, wouldn't cost you hardly a thing. Right now, if a resident wants to view the meeting, it costs them $15 for a copy of the videotape, and that's entirely unnecessary, but it's the only choice residents have if they're unable to attend in person. There's some very fine work being done by the Planning Commission and the ZBA members, and I think that what they learn there and what the process is should be available to the residents prior to those issues coming to you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Under Supervisor's comments, this is from the Macomb County Department of Roads. 23-mile road will be closed to through traffic between North Avenue and Fairchild to remove and replace the box culvert or bridge at the heart drain near Bello Woods Golf Course. Detours will be posted. Motorists are advised to avoid the area. Residents of the road will have access to their homes. This has been posted on our website, and if there is any change of dates or times, it will be noted. The closure date is February 15th, 2019, Friday evening, and the estimated open date is February 18th, 2019, Monday morning. Thank you, that's all I have. Clerk's comment.
Good evening. I would like to start by congratulating our purchasing specialist Cynthia Carnes on achieving the Certified Public Purchasing Officer certification. This is an advanced skill level certification that demonstrates competencies for those engaged in governmental purchasing, and attest that a purchaser has reached a specific level of education and experience, and is knowledgeable about government purchasing. This certification exceeds the Certified Professional Public Buyer requirement in our job description. Congratulations, Cindy. Also, our mitten bid postings can be located on our website under the Finance/Purchasing tab, which has not been available before. The New Haven Community Schools District Board of Education has unanimously approved going forward with a $25 million bond proposal at last night's regular meeting. We will be administering a special election, and the bond proposal will be placed on the May 7th ballot. I will post the bond language on our website and contact information should you have any questions regarding the bond. I would like to remind voters to utilize no reason absentee voting, which means you do not have to declare a reason to vote absentee ballot versus going to the polls. Please contact my office if you would like to be added to the list. And I would just like to thank the board for approving the civic clerk software. My office is very excited to get that going and implement it. Thank you.
Treasurer's comment.
Friday the 14th, Friday, I don't know, Thursday. Thursday, February 14th is the last day to pay your taxes without penalty. February 15th, there will be a penalty until the 28th of February. That is the last day to pay your taxes to Macomb Township. After that, they will go delinquent to the county, and the payments will be made there with penalties that they have added. Our office has been very busy today, the 13th, and I'm sure tomorrow, on the last day, we will be very busy again. So, thank you to all of our residents who pay their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair. First of all, I just want to follow up to, I made a comment to Mr. Gillis about the way he presented his agenda item tonight. He wasn't the only one. Last meeting, I had some concerns because I was not seeing the fingerprints or the presence of, of our purchasing specialist on, on some of the purchases, and I made some comments about that. After that meeting, I met with Stacy Smith, and I made the promise to her, actually, she made the promise to me, I think you're gonna start seeing that. I think some of the procedures and processes are, are underway, and I think you're gonna start seeing it. And I said, when I see that, I will, I will mention it and point it out. So, that's what I'm doing right now, and that's what I was alluding to with Mr. Gillis. So, thank you for that, because I did support the purchasing specialist, so it's important to me to see that the purchasing specialist is, is involved with these purchases. Not to say she wasn't from the time she came on, but we're seeing it in documents, so thanks for that. The only other thing I do, I want to thank State Representative, State Representative Jeff Yarick for inviting me to be his guest on the floor of the House of Representatives at last night's State of the State address by our governor. I had never been to a State of the State, and then I actually got to sit on the floor with him, so that was a big moment for me. As soon as all these snow days are over, I'm gonna be able to bring that back to my students, but again, I want to thank your State Representative.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may, just a couple of comments. One is that I've been a guy that's always saying that we should be updating our IT ware for the township, because we have to start looking, you know, two or three years from now on how we do stuff and, and where we're going with it. And one of the things is, is that I know BSA, VSNA was updated and everything else, so if there's a, the IT department comes underneath you, if you can have that person look at, or BPI look at our equipment to see where we're at, where we're going, what's in the budget under the capital improvement program, so that we can start putting the money away on this thing. A lot of people don't realize is that the cloud is going to be the place where everything's gonna be at, and having some of this thing that's gonna be here is gonna be, is just gonna go away. And I will have to disagree with, with Madam Clerk here, as far as that maybe the IT department will go completely away, and all we have is just vendors that are gonna come in here and do our stuff, because it's moving on such a fast pace that whatever I buy today is, is already dead tomorrow, and, and, or a week from now. So that's how I feel, is that a lot of times we have to look at some of this stuff in order for us to be updated, and it took us 13 years in order for us updated just on our cameras, on some of this computer stuff, because everybody out there, the 90-plus-thousand residents are looking for, for us to be at the, at the cusp of IT stuff. So, that's all I have. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Mr. Krasinski, I didn't say I wanted the IT department to go away. Just, I'm just clarifying that.
Okay.
Okay. There are two items to be reviewed in closed session. Would someone make a motion, please?
Madam Chair, make a motion to go into closed session to discuss closed session, items 24 and 25.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to enter into closed session. Would you call her all, please?
Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Busenow?
Yes.
Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. We are adjourned to closed session. We are back in open session. We discussed two items. The first one is status of contract negotiations with Ask Me Chapter Local 191723.
We switched them.
We have to do them in order.
But we amended, we approved the agenda with those switched.
Okay. All right, back up.
Yep.
We'll do 25 first. Consideration of the purchase of real property prior to obtaining an option to purchase that property. Are there any motions on this item?
Madam Supervisor, that was informational purposes only.
Thank you. The next one is the closed session to discuss the status of contract negotiations with Ask Me Chapter Local 1917.23. Are there any motions in this regard?
Yes, Madam Chair. Reject the current offer and return to negotiations.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to reject the offer, the, reject the offer and return to negotiations. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and that concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Ms. Posey.
No, Ms. Posey.
Oh, Ms. Posey, and supported by Mr. Krasinski to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. We are adjourned.